...in the building, so I want to help you here presently. Um, let's see, minutes, uh, September ninth, two thousand fifteen, regular session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
September fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, regular session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
September sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, regular session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There he is.
Wait, stop this.
We're just getting ready to adjourn.
Keep going.
September, September sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And September twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, regular session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Hey.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any public hearing components with, uh...
You can't.
Seven oh five.
Let's do, uh...introduce, introduce a new, uh...
A new recruiter?
EMT, is he here?
Not yet.
He is not here as of yet.
Okay.
He didn't work for any of his own grandbills, so I don't know if he's gonna make it back. But I apologize for wanting him in advance, but he's been, uh, he's still living up to home right now.
I think he only lived in one.
All right, let's do some new business and we'll get that done now. Notification, the town administrator will be extending the appointment period for the interim director of public works, Michael J. Kittredge III, for ninety days.
Mr. Chairman, the, um, Mr. Kittredge's appointment, uh, first ninety day appointment, um, expires on, um, October eighteenth. Technically, that, that's the day before, uh, the day before town meeting. This is your only meeting between now and, uh, in that expiration period. Uh, I'm, uh, extending the, uh, the term from, uh, October nineteenth, uh, two thousand fifteen to January seventeenth, uh, two thousand sixteen. That, uh, by the way, Mr. Chairman, should be well within the, uh, time of performance you'll hear tonight on the, uh, from the MMA consulting group on the conduct of the DPW study. We've got a not to exceed date on that of December fifteenth. It'll be more likely around the beginning of, uh, around the beginning of December, you'll see those study results. But, um, Mr. Uh, Mr. Kittredge, uh, has thus far, I think, you know, performed in exemplary fashion. I think there's a, you know, there's a new sense of purpose, uh, there, and I'm actually very pleased to, you know, to extend it these additional ninety days.
Do we need a vote, or we just, just announce them?
So moved. So can concur?
That would help, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consider approving the hiring of operations assistants for WBPA TV as step one, grade one, eleven seventy-nine, subject to query and successful pre-employment physicals effective October eighth, two thousand fifteen.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
We have to announce...
Can I just ask a question?
There's no name.
Are there gonna be people that are gonna be filming? I'm just, uh, let's film.
Yes, I was just downstairs and they, that's what they said, they're gonna use this person for us.
Okay. Is it just one?
This...
Is it many?
There's no name on it.
The one they're doing right now is this gentleman.
And the, the package, behind the package, and the Nancy sent it was Cliff de Meloche.
I thought this was, um...
I think.
I don't know.
Do you have a name?
No.
Yeah, it's, it's funny, his name's not on here.
I don't have a name on it.
I thought it was...
But it's, it's...
I don't think it might be, um...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, one? Yeah?
Sorry, on the back.
Was it one of these two names?
I just was asking, general.
She's, she's, no, she runs it.
I don't care who it is.
Was it one of these two?
Cliff de Meloche as well. But, yeah, stuff to Nancy.
Is that who you got, Cliff de Meloche?
If, if you, I don't, I didn't print out the stuff.
On the back.
Here's it on the back, yeah.
I'm gonna grab a one.
Second to last sheet.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's the gentleman.
Uh, Cliff de Meloche, um, Colonial Drive in West Wilson.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
You have a question?
No, no, I just was wondering if, what he was, what the person was gonna do and how many there were, that's all.
Looks like there's only one.
I do have a, is this in place of the person we already have, or is this adding?
Adding, I believe. Adding, they're trying to add people so all the meetings will be covered.
Okay.
We'd like many ponies in the stable, as many as we can possibly get, and there's a, a new push on for...
His resume is that he's been volunteering to do this type of stuff at the high school for several years.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, consider request for transit vendors licensed to sell scalp popcorn in support of scouts at the farmer's market effective October eighth, two thousand fifteen through October eleventh, two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question.
All good.
Is scalp popcorn different than regular popcorn?
It's twice as expensive.
By about twenty bucks.
But it's good.
I was just wondering, it's, you know, if there's a different kind of popcorn.
Um, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Is this the same troop, or do we know that's going to be taking over the square in the center of town?
Hmm. I imagine it's the West Wilson.
Yes, it is.
Is it?
Yeah, 'cause Jason Coontz is the one who put it in, and his son's a natural.
Okay, I was just curious. Nice to see them do something else.
Excellent. All right. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go back to the, uh, public hearing. All right, public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirements of the general bylaws of town of West Wilson. Article twenty-three, public hearing, a notice that the board of selectmen will meet on Wednesday, October seventh, two fif, at two thousand fifteen at seven oh five P.M. For the purpose of considering updates to the selectmen's policy, L-one, policy on ambulance fee billing and collections. Uh, the meeting will be held in the selectmen's meeting room, town hall located one forty, West, uh, Worcester Street. For additional information, review information, please contact the office of board of selectmen. Want to come forward, Tom?
To the law.
'Cause as we discussed the last meeting, um, I didn't realize that we needed to go and get a, a hearing on this. But, um, I have had no one comment or ask questions about it, but just to refresh everyone's memory, um, the reason for the increase was that there are certain times that people are, are charged, they, their insurance companies charge for the majority of the ambulance call. There's a small balance that's left. Fifty dollars wasn't cutting it anymore. It's generally around a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Some of these times, it's a error in the billing company. They were billing for treat and release, which we don't charge for. And again, we were, this gave me the authority to write off the over. We're moving it from fifty to one fifty. And it's just to help with the bookkeeping, to keep the accounting department happy, 'cause if we can get them written off the books sooner rather than later, it seems to help them downstairs. We're finally getting on track with the billing company about the insurance and getting our write-offs in a timely fashion, and we're gonna be relooking that in the near future also.
Yes, we're gonna work another point, different billing company in the future?
Correct.
Yeah.
It was just a ten-year...
Right.
...period, and it was time to, to relook at it.
Question?
Yes.
Chief, um, I know when you were here last, you mentioned that there was some past dues that you were trying to work on and get caught up, if you had any chance. I, I know you're really busy, but...
They've been submitted.
Okay. So we're moving forward on that, too?
We are moving forward on that, trying to recapture that money that, uh, the dispatcher helped me out getting those addresses and numbers, and I'm waiting for the new updated sheet, and then I get a new updated write-off sheet, and then I can see where we stand. It takes a little while for the...
Okay.
...for the paperwork to go back and forth.
Sure. All right, thank you.
It'll keep you posted.
Good job.
So this draft policy also gives you the ability on a case-by-case basis to write off larger balances, correct?
Correct. If people can prove hardship, which I've had a couple inquiries in the last couple of years, um, I've asked for documentation, you know, could you just send me an email, send me a letter? Um, one of them was like a young individual, and he said, you know, I really can't afford to pay this. And I said, well, send me a letter, and I can look at your case, and that would've been one that I would've. Um, the only other one was, uh, an elderly resident had called, and it, it came about the same fifty dollars. His insurance was charged like sixteen hundred and eighty-five dollars. He had a balance of, it was like a hundred and seventy-five. And technically, I did not have the authority to, to write that off. But I looked at his case. He's eighty-something years old, he's been a taxpayer in town all his life. I justified that by saying, we can let that one go.
And this, this policy will just, will now codify it that you can, you have the authority to do that?
If people come to me and prove hardship, that's still on there, that didn't change. This is just that amount got increased. I don't know if Nancy had given you the updated version?
Yep.
I think it's great, I think it's, works out good for the town. Um, does he have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Nice work, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And if we have time, could I introduce my new...
Sure, absolutely.
Yes.
Oh, he walked in. Did you see him walk in?
About full circle, Kevin. Robert Hayes.
Hi, sir.
Pleased to meet you.
This is Adam from Fire and Paramedic.
Pleased to meet you, congratulations.
Well, thank you.
When I died, I might, came across you.
Bob Hayes, Bob Hayes, yeah.
Said thirty years ago, we had a Bob Hayes that moved a fire and was on our department, and...
Welcome to West Wilson, really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So like I said, he's, he's come to us from Granville. Um, his fiancee's family lives in Holden, so they're looking to relocate back here. And he's getting acclimated with the system and finding the hospitals, and he's already through the first transition phase, and now he's ready to work as a BLS on his own until he gets up on his paramedic skills, which he's working on diligently, and he's doing a great job so far, so...
Excellent. Thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you, chief.
You wanna take a picture?
Normally, he take, they take pictures to put it in. Okay. All right. Just don't let him leave, just trying to help you out. Thank you.
All right, Bob?
Okay.
Bob's next. Bob's like, I'm outta here, I don't wanna talk to you guys.
This is taken to a...
Bob, why don't you come on up?
I'm about to...
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Actually, I was waiting for someone from Worcester.
Oh, you're waiting for somebody, okay.
But if she doesn't show up shortly, then we'll...
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All right, now we can do the, uh, MMA consultant group. Come on in. Hey, guys.
How are you? The, uh, I was telling, uh, Jim that the last time I was here before the selectmen was when you were in the old building, the old school, that when it rained, they put buckets all around the floors. That was a great...
Name Kevin?
It was.
I bet.
I think they, he must've knocked it down. Yeah.
We did.
Just recently.
We knocked it down about last, at least two years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
You ever have some?
I gotta say, this is different.
A little...
You know, Mark, some things never change. Uh, Monday morning, we had a, a malfunction in, uh, in the fire suppression system, and some water backed up in the, in the basement this time, so it wasn't overhead, but...
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
We can, uh, we can take, uh, five minutes, and you can ask any question you want. I'm, uh, Mark Morse, um, I'm really president of MMA consulting group. Gene and I have worked together almost twenty years. Uh, Gene, um, we usually, we usually work together on a couple things, public works-related studies. Uh, there's been a growing business of helping people hire and, um, do internal interviews for promotions in public works departments and things such as that. So, um, I can't remember the first one we worked on, but we worked on a number of communities, everything from, uh, sticks in my head, 'cause we were just talking about places like Canton and Dedham and many other places through the years. Years ago, I worked here with several other people working on the, um, was that the water or the sewer going? Way, way, way back on the issue, there was, uh, um, some of the organizational issues assigned to that many years ago. Um, the quickest thing to do is, um, it, I, I was, I was just talking to Gene, just give a summary. We met with Jim, we got a lot of information, we got the, uh, some of the stuff from Jim that was quite helpful, emailed some stuff. Uh, we already figured out a few things, but Gene can give you a summary of the things he looks at, given the size of the department, which relatively small and things such as that, and then we could, and then we give you a sense of what we think a report would cover. So, is that good with you?
Thank you. What we'll do is come in and I'll interview, um, several staff members, both in the administration. I'll look at the, um, the highway department, other departments that you have or are considering to bring in as part of this, um, study. Uh, sometimes the treasurer, the accountants come in. I take a look at the chapter ninety, how that's managed. I look at the overall organization to see if that's the best fit for the size of the community that you have and the duties that you would like the Department of Public Works to do. Um, there's also always some additional duties that end up coming underneath the Board of Public Works, or not the Board, but the Department of Public Works, just usually because nobody else is here to do it. So you end up doing a lot of community service-type activities. So I'll take a look at that and see how your staffing level is, I'll see how your organization is. I'll take a look at the job description, see if they actually fit the jobs that are supposed to be, you know, taken care of by those, uh, individuals. And then I look at the qualifications of the individuals as far as to the job description itself.
Yeah, you have a, um, interesting thing here. In a sense, you have a public works department that actually has a, a, I don't wanna say limited role, but it's a highway, maybe a cemetery role is part of that. I guess that's one of the issues, and other support-related activities, and managing of contracts. You have a lot of contracts, uh, and management of, of those things are a key part. So if you think about where the effort has to be, you have to think about that. The other issue that relates to that is if you have a lot of those administrative functions going on in the public works department, doesn't it make sense for some of those to be done in the administrator's office? There may be certain management issues related to that that should be done elsewhere. Uh, and so if you look at the department, you, you can have different varieties of department. There may be four, three or four different alternatives depend upon what we found out when we take a look at the study and we do our analysis. But so, it's a range of things. Typically, a study at the end, uh, we write a good executive summary. If, if you can't figure out the problem and describe it in a couple of pages, you failed in your job, because you need to describe it, 'cause the public reads it. You like to specifically list the recommendations, you know, move X to Y, so people know exactly what you mean, assign a priority to that recommendation, and that's really how we start reports. We have a background describing the situation, because if you read the description, sometimes people will say, uh, the following recommendations follow naturally from that description, and then you rewrite the other elements of the report. Um, we've had a, a chance to review, uh, some of the, um, issues now. You know, for example, we, we review what the job description of the, um, of the, um, director, and if you look at it, doesn't really say anything about sort of some of the things that you do today. So things like that need to be looked at a little closely when we, when we take a look at it. So that's an example of the kind of way a report looks and things that we look, look like on, on. That's helpful. I know I didn't write a lot. This is the, uh, the fall panic, everybody wants everything in the fall, so, but we're in pretty good, uh, shape right now to do work.
Questions, though?
The only question I have is, I under, now I understand what the report is gonna be, but the deliverables, as outlined in the contract, it ju, it doesn't, I'm not comfortable with it just as we're gonna prepare a report, it'll have an executive summary and make some recommendations. And I mean, is it, can you give us specific deliverables? Uh, you just did, but I'd like to see that reflected...
Well, I can send an email, which, which, which we're likely to think what those things are. Um, I, I'm not quite sure what they would be, but we know the things we have to look at and we have to address, and I can list those things.
If we could just put that as an addendum to the contract, what you're gonna do?
Yeah, I'll email a note, I'm, I'm out tomorrow, but I'm, I'm in Worcester, and if I get a chance, I'll simply just email from there on the gym, 'cause I can, I can tick off those particular items that you have on it. Um, we actually have received, I think, most of the contracts and the other stuff, and we look at the contracts, we look at the chapter ninety, and we already have some comments on some of those things. And so I'll mention that those, the things we look at. I'm doing. Just so you know, we have to go to the facilities, uh, we're not pretending to be engineers, but we always look at facilities, you always look at equipment, you look at those things that help you do the job, you need to do those things, and I'll mention those as well. Do you have the right tools? Do you have too many? Do you have not enough? Is it old? That kind of, that kind of thing.
If you could just shoot out an email being addendum to the contract, that'll give me the warm fuzzy.
That's perfectly fine, yeah. I, I recognize it was brief, it was one of those things sitting there, that my, uh, energy level collapsed. So I, please, you know...
So if I could, so the final report we get from you will be, will be what?
Um...
I know you'll do all these interviews, and I see...
Well, we need to say what we did, but we need to describe the recommendation. Um, I'm trying to change, for example, we were, um, looking at your, um, payment management program, and we were talking about payment management. How was it developed? What was the software that was used? Uh, we know that software, we know those kind of things, we make comments about that. Uh, was it fifty, fifty-something miles of road? I forgot the...
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. It's a manageable amount. So we would look at that, 'cause it's a prepared document. Doesn't it make sense? Is it reasonable? Kind of the things like that you have to do, that would be another example of those, those things. Oftentimes, if it looks good, we tell you it looks pretty good. That kind of, those, those issues. One of the things we think here, the interesting issue is, uh, what's the role of the public? Um, what did you call it? Service provider. You have a service provider function. Now, the service provider function oftentimes is the one that interfaces with the public. If you do, you know, if you do streets, grounds, fields, that's where you get the complaints, and that's where people talk about that. But if you think where, what, where you're spending your resources on contracts, you may, you spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, how are those managed? So you have to deal with both, both what I call the citizen service issues, but you have to understand that those other things that people don't see have to be done. Now, my personal view is, if somebody is not happy and you get a lot of complaints from the citizen, you gotta fix that issue, because that's how, that's how they, you know, people think about it when they vote, they think about it when they go to town meeting, and those issues always have to be on top of the agenda. There may not be a lot of money, but you gotta fix those things, you know? Um, so that's one of the things that we would take a look at as well. In fact, it's oftentimes the thing that we come across.
Another thing that we, we look at, and I find quite frequently, is a lot of departments, especially smaller departments in smaller towns, end up putting out fires all day long. They get phone calls, they end up chasing all these fires, but they're not looking at implementing programs and establishing asset management, um, programs that eliminate those fires from ever starting, because everything is well-planned, you have money, and, um, the budget is presented to you, it's very clear, it's very concise as to what the needs are, based on a priority system, based on matrix that you set up.
Okay. Um, it, it, looking at, um, what Mr. Purcell, what you sent to him, it seems very broad. Like, I'm looking at it saying, the interview town and department officials. To me, that doesn't really tell me what you're gonna be looking for, so as Mr. Crowley said, I, I wonder about the deliverable. And then, I mean, are we talking a week to get this report? I mean, nine thousand dollars is a lot of money, so I wanna know what the end result is gonna be. Are we talking two weeks? Are we talking a month?
No, we're talking, we're talking six or eight weeks. That's typically what it takes, because you're working with the other things you have to get done. Uh, you need to review information, sometimes you don't get the information right away, things such as that. So that's how, that's typically what it would take, in that range. Uh, I don't have a sense of how long it would be, 'cause I don't know enough, other than the stuff that I've read. Um, they vary in length, I, I, you know, some are, you know, some are twenty-five pages, some are longer, you know, um, so I...
So when you say interview town and department officials, what kind of questions?
We need to talk to the public works officials. Um, we need to talk to people in the town administrative office, probably need to, uh, talk to town accountant. Um, normally, um, we have ourselves open and available to talk to people, the, the rank and file in the department. Sometimes I like to have group meetings, or whatever they do, we would interview them or have a group meeting. Um, here, you need to talk to somebody in the school who interfaces a lot with the department on the civil, uh, grounds and things such as that. Those are the kind of people you need to talk to. Uh, normally, we also, um, depending upon the interest, we, we tend to interview members of the board either personally or on the phone, or whatever's appropriate, or if anybody wants to be talked to, 'cause sometimes there's, they, you hear things that other people don't hear, and we like to hear about those.
Okay, could you provide some kind of outline of what you're gonna be asking? I mean, I don't want you, honestly, if you're going to a department and they're all saying things like, well, I'm overworked and we, you know, we need...
Doesn't matter.
I need to know what kind of questions...
Let me explain how it works. If you said to me, if you said to me...
I need to know some kind of questions that you're gonna be answering, that we know the information we're gonna get is gonna be useful. That's what I'm asking.
Well, then you, then you might wanna send some of it, what you think is useful to us. You can email some of the comments. Just because someone says they're busy, or they're overworked, do you think we believe it?
I would hope not.
You know, there are measures...
But that's ninety percent of the world out there, so...
There are measures of activity, there are measures of things that have to be done. There's activity, what do they do daily? How is it organized? Is it, as Gene says, is it putting out fires, or are we thinking ahead? It's things like that that you worry about when you do this kind of study, you know? Uh, those are the things that are part of the study, I mean, on the issue. Yeah, I can list the things that we do, what kind of questions we ask, as we understand it, these are the issues. One, um, well, the issue came up, what would be the appropriate qualifications for the, for the director or superintendent?
Yep.
Right? That's an issue. I'll tell you right now, you don't need an engineer. All right? That was one of the issues that came up, and we can explain what we mean by that. It'd be nice, but you don't need a P.E. That's, that's clear. Because what is the job? If you think about what the job is, it's not really that, an engineering job, it's a management job, is what it is. Um, second, second thing is that you, you need to address the issue of, what is it? We understand there's been some discussion about the facility, uh, uh, school relation, parks. I don't know how, what you define them as, that has to be addressed. That means you gotta talk to the school people, need to even take a look at some of the facilities. You always do a drive-around, what's it look like? You know, on those things. Talk to the people who are responsible. What's the intake process for complaints? Who takes it? You know, how is that handled? How is that managed? Because that's the kind of, you know, um, in other services, you may not get any complaints, so it's probably manageable once you look at it. We know that we have to look at the staffing issue. You have a small staff, is that sufficient to, you know, manage, you know, the fifty-seven miles of road and the other tasks that you do, the, those physical tasks that have to be done? We know that there are contracts that are managed. Are they managed appropriately, that are managed there? Do we manage our contract as well? Do we get things done on time? Do we spend a lot of chapter, um, I almost said seventy, ninety money?
Money?
It's, it's, somebody was talking about it today, it's still in my head. And so how do you, how, uh, one of the problems you go to some places is they get money, but they're not ready to spend it. There's plenty of things laid out, there's projects to go, but they don't get 'em started. You see that in some places. And so the question is, are we using it? Are we efficient in that? And so, the question is, are we using it? Are we efficient in that? And there's a little bit of backup, I think, now, in, in terms of what we've just reading, some of them and stuff. So those are the kinds of issues that you have to look at, uh, that, that are here to look at. That's, that seems to me, those are the issues that were raised. Second, what was it? The other issue somebody raised, we have a small cemetery operation, should that be part of the public works department? I think those are the, um, the major issues that was raised, that were raised with us.
Can I? If nobody else?
I got a question, go ahead.
All right, well, we'll just talk about the cemetery thing. It is a small department, it's, you know, the fact that it's even listed. It's never been really decided whether we're gonna take it over or not, whether we wanna take it over or not. I can guarantee you right now that they don't wanna be taken over.
You may not want it.
Well, I mean, either or.
Yeah.
It's, I wouldn't, you know, to see that it's, uh, listed is almost kinda like a priority. The other thing I notice here that I don't notice anywhere here is that, we have a sewer department that has to be overseen by this director. And the, the director of our D P W, but it's never mentioned anywhere about the sewer. And he's not just administering a contract. He runs the department. He's a child, he's supposed to, he oversees, he oversees the contract we have, but he still is responsible for many other parts that are not.
No, that's what.
Contract.
That's what we mean by contract manager, that's the larger, largest issue. That raises issue, how much time is devoted to it? Is it appropriately managed? And it also raises issue, should all those contracts be managed in the department or should part of them or some parts of them be managed elsewhere?
By elsewhere, what, what'd you mean, like elsewhere?
Well, by default here, it's the town man, uh, town administrator's office.
So you give it to him to manage?
Or parts of that, you may, maybe the financial piece of that, not some of the other management pieces, depending on how it's operated.
But I guess my, still, my whole point is, is that, and it may be what we wrote is, you know, um, it mentions cemetery, but it mentions nothing to do with sewer. Mentions school grounds, and I don't believe we do the school grounds anymore. We have nothing to do with that. We, we plow the parking lot, that's it, uh, in the winter. So, I mean, maybe, I'll be honest with you, I just, I don't feel comfortable that. You, you've had already, I mean, to me, you've already answered like twelve questions that you don't even have a contract yet, you don't. You're telling us how you're gonna do things, because you went, oh, you don't need a, a P E.
You don't.
I don't know, you haven't even studied that, uh, anything you've done yet.
Well, you know, we've read all the material, you know, we, you reviewed all the material.
I know, but how, how could you have, I, I'm just asking, how could you review the material? You don't have a contract yet, you haven't even.
We always review it so we can figure out what's there, if there's something tricky, that you have to look at things before. Look, you didn't really give any feedback of what was. We never got any really specific.
That's what I'm just saying, maybe we didn't give you the right.
And that's part of the discussion that we were trying to have here, I thought.
Maybe we should've done a better job of telling you what we're looking for. And then you could tell us what you can do it for and what you're going to specifically give us. Rather than just, like I guess other people said, interview town departments, officials, I mean, I mean, I, I, I don't know, I just, I don't know, there's gotta be a contract somewhere in this whole thing, and I don't know how we write it out of this and.
Now, did you, have you, I don't mean to interrupt, but, so, some of the things we hit that you covered, yeah, the management of the contracts, that includes the sewer department, I understand that.
Right.
It's the issue of, um, of the, the role and the function of the, um, uh, department manager, superintendent. There's, there's, and that's two pieces. That's the service piece, we call it, and the other piece is that contract management. You know, the sewer, but there's a lot of other pieces of work that you do.
Right.
It's actually, that means, it's also the management of that company, the engineering companies that you support, that's part of.
That's correct, I understand that.
There's, there's the management of the day-to-day people providing those services and whatever those services are, which means things such as, what's the pavement management program like? What are some of the other things, what are the equipment to use? Should, in fact, we just put out fires and not do other kinds of things?
Correct.
Those are the kinds of things that you're talking about, I think.
Well, yes, and then we have the rubbish contract that has to be administered and made sure that it.
Yep.
Operates properly and that the money is, you know, biggest thing, well, probably with the sewer is the money. Collecting the money, make sure the money comes in through that depart, I mean, they, we have a system of how we collect it.
Right.
Because we have to deal with the water department, who is a separate entity to the town. And that, in fact, you did look at years ago about combining them, and that never worked.
That was part of that all, yeah, that thing, that's right.
It never worked.
I forgot about that.
It never worked because they didn't wanna be taken over by the town, you know, because we were coming at them like, like a warrior, since we're coming here with a hatchet and we're gonna take you. So that's why the people denied that. But, um, I don't know, I, I would feel better if I, I, I'm sure, I, I don't question your ability to do it. I just question the fact that I don't know that we've given you the right information. When I see some of the things that are on here, that we haven't decided or even, we discuss quickly. We're gonna take over the cemetery. Where do we like to take over the cemetery? They have three people, they have two, one person. Actually, I'm, what am I saying? Three, they have one. They have three, uh, three people on the board. I mean, what do you take over? One? One guy? Who mows the, mows the field and sells the lots? Well, I mean, mows the cemetery and sells the lots. I mean, I don't think there's a big cost saving taking that guy over.
I don't think you do sometimes for the purpose of cost savings, you do it, because you, if, if it's necessary to service the, the people in the town.
Right, I understand.
Because we're not, we're, in, in many instances, the things we do in local government, are, are in change, are not necessarily for cost savings reason, they're for be, better services. I mean, cost savings is always great, but it's not always the reason why we think, do things.
Right, I understand. Okay, I'm sorry.
If, if I could just add, um, you were looking for a list of people that will be interviewing, list of staff, that varies. As the gentleman just stated that, um, I'm assuming that you utilize some information from the water, which is separate in order to, you know, support your sewer bills. So that automatically brings those people into discussion. It changes as we get deeper into the actual, every department of public works is set up differently in the state. There's no two alike. So when we start interviewing, we find out what the people do, we find out what resources they have, and we see if those resources are the best resources for them to get the job done efficiently. If they need additional resources, if another section of the town is doing a billing system, I've, not necessarily here, but in other areas, sometimes it makes sense to combine the billing efforts, and you can collaboratively save money that way. But, once we start interviewing, then it's kinda like a domino effect, and it kinda leads us to who else we need to interview in order to get the full story to make a complete and accurate report and assessment.
So in regards to, so, yeah, I, I think I was just gonna ask that question. So if you start the interviews and you say, well, this is not something we had listed here, you would add that to part of the report?
Well.
If you've learned from interviews or talking to board members or?
Yeah, I mean, what we would do is, sometimes you call up and say, you know, um, sometimes you find things that you don't quite get or you can't fix. But you call up and say, look, we saw the following, a little outside the scope. This is an issue you need to address in another way. As we understand it, this is the, it may be a tangential issue, I'm trying to think of an example. We did a public safety thing recently, and we noticed that there was a collection problems with EMS revenue. It was not necessarily in the scope, and it wasn't really part of the department, the way it was done in this town, but there, it was an obvious problem. So we called up and said, look, you got an obvious problem, there's something wrong with the percentage of collections that you're paying for billing, not, it's just not right, you know, that kind of thing. And, and, and so you gotta tell.
But that was outside of the.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, we weren't even looking at it, we were just looking through the information, and I had, we happened to look at it, and I, we discussed it. And so I call up the, the town administrator and said, look, you, you, why don't you go ask the following questions to find out what, where is this? The percentage was a real high percentage for collections by the company. There was something wrong now, it might've been the community, the billing problems, but there was something wrong.
So it's possible with this, you could find things outside of.
Yeah, every once in a while.
Outside of the D P W, yeah.
Yeah, not, not a lot, but you'll find quirky little things that occur, you know, and so if, people may not know them or they know of them, but you just, you always point those things out that you see.
Now, as part of this, would you just come into town and drive around? That, no one knows you're here, just driving around to see the day-to-day operations and to watch what goes on?
You, you don't have really enough time to do some of that. You have time to talk people, to look at equipment, to look at the outcomes of the kind of issues, uh, and talk to people really on the size thing, you know? But you may look, it's, uh, we did a study with Gene, and they said they were very proud of this study that put in their, um, repaved their streets and curbs, and we, we drove around, and as you, if you remember the place, they pap paved over the foolish curbing, they did a, they did a very, they, they dropped a half a million bucks and did a lousy job.
Uh-huh.
Well, how do you say that? You say it very nicely, right? And, and that we had to talk about, you know, it was a, it wasn't well planned. Occasionally, I, I doubt if you'll have that, but that was a, one of those things that you, that you see.
To, to answer your question, I will probably drive around three quarters of the town and look at the roads, look at the condition, look at the way they're maintained. And from my experience, I can tell you if the money's being spent wisely. I've run, paved, I've run chapter ninety, I've actually developed pavement management on my own before with my own spreadsheets. Uh, for a town like this, it's, you know, much simpler to do it that way. One of the problems with the pavement management that I've seen in the past, uh, the particular one that you have, it's hard for training. It's, it's, it's difficult for end users because they're not using it every day, and it's a very complicated software. There are alternatives to that, that are much less expensive for the town. Um, you're dealing with fifty-seven miles of road. You know, and a lot of times, you can have staff that, over the course of the year, can do an evaluation on that system and update that. And, you know, a lot of times you'll see these canned pavement management systems. We were doing, I believe it was canned.
Yeah.
Their idea of a pavement management was mill a half, an inch and a half of every road and put an inch and a half of pavement back in. They tallied up how much it costs per yard, and that's what they came up with. And they had oil roads. I asked the, um, the engineer who I was interviewing in the areas, because he had put this particular project together, and I said, you know, you have oil-treated roads from fifty years ago, they've never had pavement on them, what are you going to mill off of that? He didn't go out of the office and actually take a look, and that's one of the important parts of it. It's not, a, a software does not design your programs. It's somebody who's out on the street saying, okay, in this particular case, this is what we need to do. Maybe we have to reveal some more curbing, maybe we have to raise the curbing. They're all individual, and it's difficult to put a cost in a pavement management program that addresses all the sidewalks, the curbing, the drainage issues. But a good highway man knows how to do that.
Okay. In all your, uh, experience, have you, have you done a town this size with this size D P W department?
Yeah, it was a small one.
Yeah, we've done a couple of small ones. For, actually, in, in nineteen eighty-six is the first one I ever worked on, I remember, and there were about four employees. So that's little, little, you know, not that far away. Uh, normally the size of it will be, you see eight, ten, twelve typically, you would see. Not, that's typically the kind of departments from the, um, medium-sized, smaller communities. We've seen a lot of larger ones, but usually the departments aren't very large these days.
So to follow up with that, when you come back with your recommendations, are you comparing us? If you haven't done anything since nineteen eighty-eight.
No, no, that was the first one I ever worked on.
Okay, oh, all right, then I misunderstood. So when you come back.
I'm an old guy.
Aren't we all? When you come back with your recommendations, are you comparing us to a town like us, or are you scoping out so we'll get the most benefit?
Yeah, comparative information is, it's not entertaining, but it doesn't address the job because of the unique, you got fifteen, you got twenty, uh, fifty-seven miles of road. Your community next door has a hundred and one miles of road. You know, you have different issues, so a lot of the, on a smaller department, a lot of comparative stuff like that about those services aren't overly helpful. If you're a big organization, yeah, if your shoes vary in those kind of places, makes some sense. I don't, I think it's less valuable here than it is in, in those kinds of places, in uniqueness of it.
Okay.
It is pretty unique. Smaller communities do things so uniquely. You just, you know, you just have to recognize that.
May I have a follow-up? Um, you mentioned to Mr. McCormick that you didn't think we need an engineer. Can you give us a brief reason why? I know, I'm, I'm not holding it as it stands now.
Two words, it is, or three words. It is a management job. It is not an engineering job. You need to know about factors of engineering.
Mm-hmm.
You're not stamping any plans, so you're not a P E, you know, you, that's why you have consulting engineers and the people who have deep pockets if there's a problem.
But we could.
Yeah, you could.
If we kept, if, if it wasn't engineering a job, we.
Why would, no, think about this. You're managing people, you're managing contracts, how much time do you have to do design work? You don't have any time to do design work. It just doesn't happen in towns. Um, I had a friend who's a public works director for eleven years, was a P E. I asked, how often did you, did you do any road design? He said, I haven't done any since before I was here.
Even if we could do design work, I, I wouldn't want the D P W director doing it, because if he messes up, we have no recourse against anyone.
I know, I'm just asking. I want.
That's a deep pocket issue.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we, everybody buys insurance, that's, they're all insured for that stuff. The issue, it's a management job. You need to understand what those engineers are giving you. You need to understand that kind of stuff. You're not doing some of the things, the design and things such as that, what you do. You need to know costing, you need to know how you procure, you need to know how to manage those kind of projects. In a smaller community, that's more critical, because you don't have a lot of support on those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you.
One more question? Um, obviously, you've been doing this a long time. You mentioned doing stuff in the early eighties. How many studies of D P Ws have, do you, have you guys done between you? Ten, ten, a hundred, or a thousand? I'm not looking for an exact.
Oh, no, no, I mean, uh, we've, well, some of them would be part of studies, like, we have one, but, I keep saying, we're, we're dealing with an issue of how they manage fields. We'll do a lot of little pieces like that, but comprehensive, geez, I don't know.
Ten, eleven, twelve, I don't know.
Over twelve.
Yeah, of, comprehensive. Normally times we would get hired, could you take a look at the engineering department, that kind of thing? Or, um, the, the one we have now, it's, um, it's a, um, in this town, it's a big town, they have a seal, they, the town is responsible for managing all the, uh, grounds and fields by charter. Some citizens have adopted certain fields, which is great, sort of. So it's how we, it, it, I mean, it's, it's a naughty problem because money and things such as that. So that's kind of a, you'll do those quirky things like that on occasion, right?
Any questions?
No. Look forward to the report. Now, what's next, I guess?
Now, what we need to.
Can I make a comment? I should email you a list of those things. There's two issues. It's like the, how do you do it?
Mm-hmm.
Talk to, and the other is, these are the things we think to look at, and need to, you need to look at, look, make sure that we have covered those things.
Right.
On it. So I, I can do that in the next day or so. That, I'll just email it to you at every time.
Sure. And I'd wanna see that before we sign the contract.
Signing the contract.
I wanna see what we're gonna get on the receivables. And if you're gonna do that in the next couple of days.
Where do we stand now? This was, they were just coming to introduce themselves?
I had to talk about, you know, the, you know, the scope of work, you know, your perception. They were looking for feedback on what was important to members of the board of selectmen, et cetera, et cetera, so, um, we could.
Are we voting on to sign a contract tonight?
No, go ahead. If you're, uh, if you're not satisfied with the, uh, with the content, uh, just yet, no. But, um, in the alternative, you meet again on, uh, uh, two weeks from, uh, uh, two weeks from tonight, if you got, you know, the addendum, uh, uh, between now and then, you could make a contract award in two weeks.
You're good, you're good.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, actually, we were, we talked about, our concern was, we were a little hazy about what was going on, to be frank.
Our agenda.
And so.
Agenda doesn't spell out what, he just says you're gonna be here.
Well, we're glad you came in, we solved.
It was absolute pleasure. I love the new building and the, and the color scheme.
So hopefully, uh, two weeks, you'll come back and we'll, uh.
Yeah, are, are.
I don't even have to come back.
Take a look.
Get the email and any information.
What on the email in the next couple of days, and if you share it, and then, and if there's a problem, you can get back at that time. I don't think that's.
I don't think they need to come in.
No, no.
No, but we have to, but can I, you addressed the issue, why do you look at the reports? You, you have to figure out what's there before you even say the things you're going to do. That's the difficulty we have with a small department. If you go in to do a larger town in the city, it's a lot easier to figure out what to do, because they have bodies everywhere, you know? And you can, you can read things, and it's hard in the smaller town to figure out what they actually do.
No, I would think, I don't, I don't know how you could even come forward to us without reading something.
Yeah, you gotta define the problem before you can tell us what you're doing.
Yeah, I mean, we read as much as we could read, we, we talked to Jim, we looked at the, you know, the contracts, we looked at a whole range of things. Most of them were pretty good, but, I mean, you know, but, you know, everything from the pavement management program, and I don't mean to belabor it, I know you probably have a million things to do.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
One last thing, are you going to be adding what Mr. McCormick, um, mentioned?
Uh, yeah, I got it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Hey, guys. Have a good ride. Oh, you going to the list of that? All right.
Yeah. More discussion on this?
Yeah.
We wanna have discussion on what we want?
I just, I just, whatever they send us, we need to have, because he, he mentioned the scope of the job. Well, I don't see any scope of any job here. There was sign.
That's why I asked him for what, what the deliverables are. I liked what I heard and, and what their approach is gonna be, and it's very, it's gonna be very difficult for them to say, we're gonna do A, B, C, D, and E, because once they do A and B, C may change.
No, I, I get, I, I, I guess, yeah, I, it, that was fine. To me, they were already answering half of the questions that we already have. And I'm like, why'd you answer half the questions we already have? You haven't done anything yet. So that just makes me like, how do you, I don't wanna preconceive, this is what we're gonna do, a little less spoilsome. So I guess where, I don't know where the scope is. It's not listed in this piece of paper, certainly, unless that's supposed to be it at the bottom.
Well, he's gonna.
Those four, five things. But, you know, I mean, I, I don't know, it just doesn't seem to me that, it's not like any other contract I've ever signed here. It's like much more, well, this is all we're gonna do, and you don't need this already, and I already know this, and we're gonna change this, and we're gonna combine the cemetery maybe, and we're gonna, geez, how do you know all that stuff? You haven't done anything, you haven't.
This is what they have.
That's what we're paying you to do, and yet you've already answered.
Well, hopefully.
Six questions.
Hopefully, they're gonna be able to, uh, get the points to Mr. Purcell, and he will forward them first of.
Point of information too, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, Mark had had a, um, uh, a conversation with, uh, with the previous town administrator, a conversation with, uh, with myself, um, uh, Mark and Gene, and, um, uh, you know, we, you know, we expressed, you know, some of the concerns, um, uh, that we had. Uh, on their, uh, on their list of things to do was to, you know, have the same conversation with, uh, with any member of the board of selectmen that wanted to do that. They did say that the, uh, that the direction of the, as I had suggested to you at our last meeting, that the direction of the study, you know, changed a little bit between, uh, between Leon's time and my time. Uh, obviously, the, you know, what happened was we lost the, uh, the person at the top, and so what had been a, uh, a supposed, um, uh, audit and, uh, and improvement plan for, you know, not just the department, but the departmental leadership, you know, turns into a, uh, an audit and, all right, what kind of direction are we going in now? You know, the, the change in leadership, you know, really did kinda change the, you know, the direction or the, you know, the focus of the, uh, the focus of the study.
But I, I guess, I don't mean to disagree with you, because you just, you're gonna answer me, obviously. But it was always to find a new direction, to make sure the direction we were in was right or wrong. And if it's wrong, to tell us what direction we should go, not, it really had nothing to do with the, Anthony was here or not. Basically, it was to find out what we're gonna do after Anthony left. So that's how I always understood it, I don't know if you.
That's where we are now, anyway. You know, regardless, you know, that's, you know, that's where we are.
I just, I, I don't know, I just think it needs to say a lot more than this little, these papers is.
Yeah, I don't disagree on that part.
Yeah, I think we can add the, the information part, but it does say on the report, it does briefly summarize what they're gonna do. They'll prepare a report, they'll talk about it, uh, they'll include an executive summary, findings, recommendations, priorities, and possible alternatives. If we could just add more information to that line, I think we're good.
That's what I'm looking for, is.
I think that, that kinda spells out what he's gonna do, I just, you know, a little more.
Yep.
Yeah. And then maybe if, I don't know, if town council will look at a contract like that. And then maybe if, I don't know, if town council will look at a contract like this, or if it's too small, I don't know if they need to.
The council looked at this, I think they'd say, they haven't looked at this, right?
That's what I'd, I would say for the small.
I think, I think we're all saying the same thing. It's, you know, uh, the proposal itself is coming up, uh, you know, the written, uh, proposal was coming up a bit short, but, um.
I liked what they had to say. I think they're going to do a job.
I think, yeah. I think you can see there's more substance to it. Now just put it on, put it on paper.
I think we could, not so much generalization, more substance, like detail.
More, more detail, and I really want them to look at the whole picture and not already make the judgments on the items that they've already been given. That would be my recommendation.
Yep.
Because, yeah, I'll be honest, my opinion, I just, I don't particularly like them at all. I just think that they, I don't know. I just didn't like when he came in and told us what he already wants, what he's going to do already. And he hasn't done the job yet, so, anyway, moving on.
We'll bring it up in the, uh, October twenty-second meeting. All right, uh, Robert Purcell, chairman of Board of Health, to follow up discussion on M I A with City of Worcester.
Barrow.
Barrow, what did I say?
Purcell.
I'm sorry.
Really? Gosh.
Audience slipped, wasn't it?
Well, it's because you think of.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Hi, Bob.
I'm Bob Barrow.
Oh, really? Very nice to meet you, sir.
Yep, and this is, uh, Karen Clark from the Worcester Board of Health. And we're here to discuss the, um, the position at, at the, uh, Board of Health as it presently stands.
This has nothing to do with.
In a way, some background, the Board of Health presently is staffed twenty-five hours a week. Which has been absorbed by those hours and that, that, those benefits had been absorbed by the City of Worcester. They were very gracious. Because back in, what was it, two or three years ago, we, we co-joined the, uh, the Worcester Board of Health. They were able to do that because their funds were augmented by two grants that they'd received, were they state or federal grants?
They were state grants.
State grants, for, for the purpose of regionalization. Subsequently, those grants have expired and they haven't renewed. So which brings us to where we are today. Right now, the, the Board of Health, uh, needs to have a, a position staffed. The Worcester Board of Health has offered us two, um, inter-municipal agreements. Which, um, on the one hand, one was for some, some forty-two hundred dollars, and our Board of Health rejected that outright because we thought we could bring the, the, uh, that service to the town at, at, at a more reasonable cost if we had our own employee. Subsequently, the, 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 the Board of Health has, has an interest in joining with the City of Worcester with inter, uh, municipal agreement on, on the order of about sixteen hundred dollars. The, the scope of services is outlined in the municipal agreement, and it states what, what the, uh, the duties and functions are of each party. I think there was some confusion, uh, when I first came before the, the, uh, the Board here, in that they, they assumed that the deal we presently have with the City of Worcester was still going to exist. That's not the case. The, the administrative functions have been, in all agreements, uh, subsequent to the expiration of, of the, their grants. The responsibility of the town. So that, that's where we stand now. The, the Board of Health would like to continue to work with the City of Worcester in a limited way. I, I might also add, uh, for your information, that the, I think, one of the questions you might want to know is, what does, what, what would the person do here, sitting, um, here at the office? Well, first of all, we need someone to answer the telephone. We need, we need someone to process the, the permits. The, the Board of Health collects between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars a year in fees and permit fees. So, um, at, at present, I believe the, uh, the, the Board of Health is being subsidized to, uh, in, in this past budget, approximately ten thousand dollars. So that we're, for the most part, we're picking up our, our own, uh, costs through the revolving fund. Now, at mo, our most recent meeting, the, um, the Board did vote, we would like to have twenty-five hours. And I know that Mr. Crowley's going to expound upon that a little bit, hopefully. And we would like to have this sort of, uh, agreement, uh, with the City of Worcester to provide inspections and, and, uh, education and such that we, we need. Either you want to have a Board of Health that's effective, or it can be a paper tiger. I mean, I think we, we need to really look at that. And I think, uh, I'd like to turn over to Karen just for a second, just so she can tell us exactly the services that the City of Worcester is going to provide in the, into, uh, the municipal agreement.
Sure. Um, so again, my name's Karen Clark. I'm the deputy director for the City of Worcester's Division of Public Health. And, uh, myself and Kathy Johnson, who's the assistant city manager for the City of Worcester, have been meeting with the Board of Health for some time. Because the I M A that existed, um, over the last couple of years, uh, had always indicated that, um, the current administrative assistant slash City of Worcester employee, um, would, it would sundown after a certain amount of time. Just to kind of give you a little more context, um, there were, there was arrangements made with the former director of public health and the former, um, town administrator here. Um, with this hybrid model where the, um, administrative assistant slash health agent was absorbed by the City of Worcester to become an employee. This has been a little bit different than how we've typically done this. We have six communities that are part of the Central Mass Regional Public Health Alliance, obviously West Boylston being one of them. Um, in almost every case, um, as towns have joined the alliance, we have assumed, um, we have absorbed the employee, the health agent of that community to become a City of Worcester employee. Um, in all of the other communities, um, the other five towns, obviously Worcester being the city, um, they all have their own administrative assistant that is employed by that town. Um, so this was very different. I'm not sure what the rationale was, or how, I was not a part of that conversation, neither was Bob. Um, but in previous I M As, it always indicated that that position was going to sundown because we knew that the employee that we hired from this town over, over to the City of Worcester was going to be eventually retiring. So she now is in the process of retiring at the end of November. So we, myself and Kathy Johnson have a meeting with the Board of Health to talk about what the Board of Health's plan was to get an administrative assistant that would be employed by this town. In the interim, the I M A expired June thirtieth, and we have made arrangements now through two I M As. One was for an additional month or so. This one is a fully executed copy. I view it, signed this recently. Um, I gave Bob your fully executed copy back with the manager's signature. This one expires November thirtieth. Um, so basically, where we're at right now is the Board of Health, um, wants to be able to continue services with us, but minus, um, nursing and Title V.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Right.
So right now, um, you know, the, the issue is that you need to hire somebody because we don't supply administrative assistants. That's not what we do. We provide health services.
So, you only, we, we'd hire somebody to do Title Fives?
Well, we would, we would.
You could contract with somebody.
We would contract with somebody, right.
Title Fives, and somebody to answer the phone, um, make appointments for inspections, stuff like that, then they'd contact the City of Worcester. The City of Worcester would go out and inspect the property.
That's right.
Is that correct?
That's correct, but don't, don't forget that, you know, that there's a, there's a, there's the coordination of the septic inspections. Someone's going to be in the office. Someone's got to answer general questions about health, uh, and about, uh, you know, permit, permit fees, uh, the communicable diseases, uh, the, there's the.
Tobacco permits, that kind of thing.
Tobacco permits and such. So there, there's a, there's a good-sized workload down at the, uh, the Board of Health. And I, um, just because you don't see it, that's a good thing because it shows that we're effective. You know, there, there are complaints that do come in on restaurants and, uh, or persons with, with, uh, septic issues and, and, you know, just general health questions.
So we still would, you know, have someone who would be able to conduct food inspections, housing inspections, nuisance, you know, the, um, sort of regulatory environmental health pieces. And then I know the Board is very interested in continuing to work with us on community health initiatives like regional health surveys and tobacco and substance abuse. And actually, there's, um, a couple of grants that we have that are around substance abuse prevention that, um, you know, West Boylston is a part of. We work very closely with your chief of police. Um, so there's a lot of work going on there, and, um, you know, certainly being part of the region helps these communities to avail themselves to some of these initiatives that we're working on. Um, and also, um, emergency preparedness work that we do out of our office. So basically, the only two things that, um, well, three things would change. One is you'd have your own West Boylston, you know, town employee as the administrative assistant. And then we would just not be providing your nursing and Title V services. But if you needed that, you would have to obviously contract for that, or certainly, you know, we want to be as flexible and as supportive as possible. Um, but this is the business deal that, you know, they want to make. Um, we want to continue to partner if things changed and the Board decided that either just wasn't flowing well, contracting with these other organizations to do the work, or, you know, they really wanted to just come back with, and get the full, um, all-in deal with us. You know, we'd be happy to entertain that as well.
So, I'm sorry, here's that's one question. So it would be si, si, fifteen hundred ninety-one dollars a month. So it wouldn't be per inspection, it would be just a flat fee per month?
That's right. Sixteen hundred dollars a month, whatever that is. Sixteen hundred dollars a month.
So for nineteen thousand two hundred dollars a year, you're going to do all the inspections?
Mm-hmm.
And what else?
Housing inspections.
Housing.
Housing, food, nuisance.
Nuisance inspections. Uh, will, will, they, they help with education. One, one initiative we've got done was we were able to get the, uh, pill collection, uh.
We, right, we furnished, um, the police department in your town with the prescription drug kiosk. And we just, we do all kinds of things like that. We do a lot of education. We provide all kinds of health topics for your website. We do work at the senior center, education.
We'll still get all that.
Right, so.
So if we went with the extra thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars, which is the difference between the sixteen and the forty-two, what more would we have?
That's Title V, and that's the nursing services.
So those two things.
Right. See, they.
It's expensive.
It's expensive.
Title V is a lot.
We could, we could contract with a, a local engineer, um, through the revolving fund. It's a, it's a no cost to the, to the town when we do this. So tha, tha, that's why we figured we, we, we'd opt out of the, the septic services. And then the, the nursing piece, we actually have three nurses on the, uh, on the Board of Health. So that, um, we have good connections with the Visiting Nurse Association and such. So we, we, we opted to take care of those pieces ourselves.
So how did we, the past three years, survive without someone answering the phones here in town?
Well, that's the whole thing. Barbara, I mean, we're talking about Barbara Mard. Barbara has, um, been in a little bit of a different scenario again. She's, she has been primarily dispatched to West Boylston. We have other inspectors that take on, or kind of assigned to specific towns, um, you know, Lester or Shrewsbury, what have you. In those towns, they have their own administrative assistant, as I mentioned. So Barbara was this hybrid model. She not only was answering the phones and providing administrative support as she had done previous to the agreement, um, coming on with the alliance. But she also was out doing some, some amount of inspections, but it was highly augmented by other staff, um, who had the skill set to be able to do maybe some of the higher, um, risk food establishments and those kinds of things.
This new person that we hired will not be doing any of that?
No.
No, won't be doing the inspe, well, you know, you often want to have a representative from the town maybe attend with, with, with an inspector, just so that they can brief the whole Board on maybe the situation that exists and, and, and a condition. But, but, but for the most part, the inspections will, and, and the responsibility is going to fall with the City of Worcester.
Bob, before, um, we went to Worcester, who was doing our Title V in nursing? Was Barbara doing it, or are we contracting it out?
No, we contracted out an engineer, uh, for, for the, for the Title V.
Okay.
Uh, and we have less of that now because the town effectively is, a lot of it's sewed.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
Um, and then, then nursing piece, we, we'd contract with the V and A.
Okay.
And they, and they handle that piece for us.
My other question is, if this person is going to be mainly in-house, let's say, an employee of West Boylston, couldn't they do this? They post the hours, twenty hours a week versus the twenty-five? And I'm asking that question because of all the benefits and retirement down the road. And if those hours are posted, that's when people are going to come in, and I think we could get the job done in twenty hours.
And I have the numbers on what the differences would be, and, and I shared these with Bob. I haven't broken down it to a monthly basis. So I got a whole spreadsheet from, and I don't know if everybody else was copied on this, but I, there's a whole big spreadsheet that Leslie sent. So you don't have to understand any of, of what it says with the exception of, if we were to hire someone at twenty-five hours a week, using, Bob, what was it, fifteen?
Fifteen twenty-three an hour. It would be, it'd be the S four, or the administrative assistant four.
So at fifteen twenty-three an hour, if the, at twenty-five hours a week, if they are an existing, this is worst-case scenario, if it's an existing employee that takes the full family insurance, so they qualify for the twenty percent copay instead of the thirty percent, it will cost just shy of thirty-two hundred dollars a month. That goes down, there's, if it's an individual existing, but they're just taking the individual plan, it's twenty-three hundred a month. And it, and depending on what insurance they take, it could be as high as thirty-two hundred, or if it's a new, a new hire, taking an individual plan, it would be just shy of eighteen hundred a month. If we go to the twenty hours a week, and that includes the retirement, Chris, that you had mentioned to include it. If we have somebody at twenty hours a week, it's thirteen hundred and twenty dollars a month. So for five extra hours, the price could be two and a half times as much. So, and you had mentioned it in your email, the question is, you know, we've got to go back to the Board of Health, could they post this as a part-time job? The flip side of that coin is, you post it at a fifteen dollar and twenty-three cent an hour job with no benefits, how long is the person going to stick around? And it might become a revolving door. That, that's just, it's.
That, that, that's absolutely true. And, and the other issue might be that we might get somebody that already has insurance. Our present employee already, already carries insurance.
The, i- if we had somebody at twenty-five hours a week and they took no insurance at all, it's, it's seventeen hundred and sixty. It's almost no difference, you know, you're just paying the, the hourly thing. The insurance is clearly the piece that, you know, and you can't advertise it, oh, it's twenty-five hours a week, but we don't want you to have insurance. It doesn't work that way.
Right, right.
What is your threshold? Is it nineteen hours and lower is no?
I was told twenty by, I, I, I don't know whether it said twenty or under twenty.
I think it must be under twenty. Yeah, under twenty. Because once you get to twenty.
Right. So if you're half-time, and, and Leslie sent it in an email, I didn't print that out, um, yeah, here it is, the, the wage grade step four. Um, it's, it's under twenty.
We'd have to hire him for nineteen hours instead of even twenty, to give him no insurance.
I think it makes sense to the town.
Well, no, it's, the thing is, what do you, what do you need?
Well, you know.
You know better than me.
Yeah, well, you know, in, in fact, because we are partnering with Worcester, and we do have the inspections being done by Worcester, I think we might be able to get away with it for nineteen hours. Uh, what I'd like to do is, we could try it for the nineteen, and if it doesn't work, we come back.
Okay.
All right? And I think we, we go from there because, you know, I'm a taxpayer too, but I also want the Board to be effective.
Exactly.
I, I mean, it's, so we'll, we'll, we'll look at it that way if we. I, I mean, it's, so, we'll, we'll, we'll look at it that way, if we, uh, now, the job has already been posted for twenty-five, so I'm going to take it down, and we'll rewrite it, get it out there. Now, there's going to be some overlap too, uh, because I need to get some training done, and I might have to bring somebody back in to help us sort of coach the new person, because I don't think I'm going to get anybody with all the credentials that we were really looking for, we're going to have to train the person, uh, you know, with, and with the assistance of Worcester.
I told Bob, you know, we have very strong relationships with all the towns and the Alliance, in particular with their administrative assistants, who we feel are one of the probably important, most important position, they're the eyes and ears of the office. Um, you know, we have, um, you know, some flexibility to be able to work with some of the other town managers to say, you know, can we borrow one of your administrative assistants to come out and talk about, you know, how, what works best for them, and what situations do they encounter, and you know, there will be things to learn, just, you know, how do you, what do you do when somebody sells to a mi- tobacco to a minor and you guys have to do a ticket, so and that's just one piece, so I think, you know, between myself and other admins, um, one in particular that I can think of who would be stellar to help, and also Phil Legere, who is our Chief of Environmental Health, um, you know, we're all willing to help, that's what this is about, we want to make it work for everybody, so, I mean, we can help as much as possible to, to help with the training and
True.
I have a question, so, you said, the worst-case scenario, it costs how much a, a month?
I- if, worst-case scenario, which is an existing employee applying for the job, so they, that qualifies for the twenty percent copay on their insurance, it's, the actual number is three thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-four cents.
So, thirty-two hundred dollars a month?
A month.
What's the best scenario, the nineteen?
Uh, I have it at, I have it at twenty.
All right, twenty plus enough.
If it was twenty hours a week, it's thirteen nineteen ninety-three, so thirteen hundred.
With the, with the health insurance?
With no, that's no health insurance.
No health, so how, how much is that again?
Thirteen.
Thirteen hundred dollars.
That's at nineteen hours? Because twenty-five is about seventeen hundred.
Yeah, that's twenty hours, thirteen ninety, so
So, it's nineteen hundred dollars a month more?
Right.
To have the best as compared to the worst.
Basically, nineteen hundred dollars, the, the extra five hours could cost us nineteen hundred dollars a month, is what, what it costs.
Over how many years?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Right, I mean
I guess my, my point is, is that we have a board, a small board, that is going to, is trying to function on their own. They've always had twenty-five-hour person, uh, twenty to twenty-five, whatever. And I know that there is a lot to be done, if you take, you look at Nancy's job, basically, this person has the same job, takes the minutes at your meeting, you need a report, she puts together the report, you need information, she gets the information from wherever she has to get it to give to you. So, they're busy, they're not just sitting there filing their fingernails waiting for somebody to file a permit.
Right.
So, we're trying to save nineteen hundred dollars, which would be times twelve is
Twenty-three thousand a year.
Twenty-three thousand dollars a year on one department. Go up the street, a mile up the street, and they hire people like, like Candy, and give them whatever benefit they need, and they hire them left and right, every day, with no consideration. Trust me, you know as well as I do, that the department up the street, a mile away, the big, the big buildings we have, right? That, they're hiring people and they're not considering, gee, should we hire this guy because they're, I'm going to save nineteen hundred bucks a, a month? They hire whoever they want to hire. So, here we are, we have a massive that they, we have, like, I'm just, and I'm not picking on them, but I guess it sounds like that, huh? Um, they, they probably, three-fifths of our, all of our insurance costs goes to there, if not more. And we're trying to worry about one department, one little person, that we're trying to take, save, like, to me, it's like a nickel in the whole big picture, that we spend money. Why are we picking on them? We don't pick on anybody else. I mean, I didn't hear this guy who wants to do the T P W say, but we're going to look into health insurance to see if we can save money, pick guys at twenty hours or nineteen hours, so we can save ten cents on their health insurance. That was never a consideration, you know, that's not in that, I mean, the work that he gave us, yeah, so, um, I, if you, I know you're selling at nineteen because you want, you want something to happen.
We need to get something.
You need a twenty, you need a twenty-five-hour person, I'm pretty convinced in my mind, I'm going to play Mark Morse here, and I'm going to already know the answer, that it's twenty-five hours is what you really want, but you want to make sure something happens tonight, so you're going to go for nineteen.
That's right.
Um, and I think that it's a mistake on our part to make you do that, for, yeah, it's twenty-three thousand dollars, but in the, in the whole picture, we were spending that twenty-three thousand dollars before.
And it might not even be twenty-three thousand.
And it could be a lot less.
Could be a lot less.
I'm just saying, we're taking one little department and one little person, and doing it to, to them, when nobody else in this whole town, including us, does that to anybody else, just hire away, hire
And we are public safety.
Make sure you can find out, make sure they, make sure they get twenty-five hours, so we can, um, and there's another building right down the street here, right at the fork in the road, that does this on a regular basis, right? They hire everybody at twenty hours or twenty-five hours.
Well, maybe we're starting to
So, well
I'd like to believe Mr. Beryl's, uh, give it a try at the nineteen hours, and if we have to increase it, we can certainly increase it.
Okay, and the other thing I would like to get executed tonight is the agreement
Right.
for the sixteen hundred dollar agreement, I don't know if you have a copy or
We do.
And Mr., Mr. Purcell might have a copy, but
That's the three-year one that goes to the end of eighteen.
We have it.
Right, okay, so I need to get that, I don't need it tonight, but I need to get it, an executive agreement.
So, somebody
I knew that we give him the, the sixteen hundred dollar.
I'll second that.
Whatever he needs there, that sixteen thousand.
Sixteen.
So, you can give
I'll make a motion, well, is somebody recording?
Get it done here in November.
That's going to, that's going to bring me, no, that's going to bring me after November forward.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, three, it's a three-year I M A, correct?
Yeah, it can be three years, but there's a thirty-day clause for each
But as, as written, approve the I M A that has been presented to the Board at approximately sixteen hundred dollars per month.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
Even after this one, that's been executed?
No, this is the one we're talking
This is one, this goes from December first to the
This, this is the one that
June thirtieth of next year.
Okay, I didn't have a copy of that.
You, you know, you
I, yeah, I just don't have a copy of it.
It would expire.
Never mind, got it, I had the, I had this one in front of me.
Was it till twenty-eighteen?
No, it goes from, uh
Can't go from December to June.
Just everything without
Yeah, I don't know, it's six months.
Yes.
Everything but not everything, okay, gotcha, okay.
December fifteenth to, to June, uh, eighteen.
Yeah, I thought it was June of eighteen, so it's, it's two and a half year next year, yeah.
Mine are close.
It was like two and a half years.
It was June, yeah.
June.
Listen, you know I get you confused over this one, putting in the twenty hours.
You're really, you're really getting me going back.
You understand it's an escalate, it escalates.
It doesn't escalate.
Okay, that's, that's, so it's understood. So, and then I also then, I can come back to you if it doesn't look like I'm going to make it for the twenty-five hours.
Yeah, we're gonna, all right, so we're gonna vote.
Nineteen hours.
Any other discussion on this agreement?
We're already doing this show, we're not talking about the twenty-nine, the hours.
We're only doing the agreement.
We're not talking about your nineteen hours.
Not yet.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll leave you.
We're going to vote on this first.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's done. Now, we're going to talk about the nineteen hours.
Now, you can say you need twenty-five, you got your agreement.
I, I'm sorry, I have to say no.
Okay.
I've never voted in favor of an agreement with this.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah.
I have to say no, not impressive, I'll take it.
Right.
I've always voted no from the very first day you wanted to do it.
All right, so now, we're going to talk about the nineteen hours to
The twenty-five.
Versus twenty-five hours, somebody more, somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion, we do it at twenty-five hours.
Anybody second? Okay, do I have a number motion?
No, well, I guess I can, I can just respond to, to some of the comments, I mean, whoever's down the street spending all kinds of money, I don't, I don't really care, we have control over this. If we can save twenty-three thousand, or ten, or fifteen here, I think we maybe can save another ten or twenty thousand somewhere else. I mean, I don't think we should, I think we should try the nineteen hours, if you find a huge issue with it, I mean, that just, the phone's not being answered and everybody in town's complaining, then maybe come back to us, but I think if we can save some money, I think we need to do it. Because like you said, you are a taxpayer also, we all are, twenty-three thousand, it's a lot of money, I mean, and if we don't have control of this other person down the street, we only have control of what's in front of us. So, I guess the motion would be that we approve somebody at nineteen hours a week.
Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
I didn't even get a comment.
I'm sorry, comment?
I understand what you're saying about the, you don't care what happens down the street.
No, I didn't say I don't care, I said we have no control of it.
You said you didn't care, you didn't care what happened down the street, because you had no control over it.
Right.
And we have control over this.
Correct.
And we're going to save, we're going to put them at an issue, so we can save twenty-three thousand, so down the street can spend it. And that's exactly what's going to happen.
That's not the way our budget's
I disagree with that too.
I like this, the money's going to go into the pot, and where's the pot going to go? Well, I just disagree, so
Mr. Chairman, the other thing I could say, if what's happening down the street is wrong, why should we do it too? Because we're trying to keep it, keep twenty-three thousand here, let's just try to save money, hopefully, everybody does the same.
I'm not saying what's down the street is wrong, I, well, you know, I'm saying that they just do it, and I think what we're doing here is putting them in an issue, and I think Mr. Beryl would agree that, he's agreeing with nineteen, so we can get something done tonight, so he can move on. And that's the only reason he's agreeing to nineteen, because he wants to move on.
Okay.
And that's kind of, to me, that's a sad scenario.
Are you comfortable moving forward in the interim to try the nineteen hours and see how it works?
Yes, if I can come back and I find out that it's not working
Absolutely.
and I get some help from you folks with regard to that.
Absolutely.
Yes, I, I mean, I
Because I'll hold, I'll hold you to that. We'll go to nineteen and a half.
All right.
No, but when he, you just remember, when he comes back, and he, you know
We didn't say what we were going to do when you come back, well, you said you could come back.
No, but you can't, you're gonna, I don't know, he, he's a part-time employee like us, and to put him through the grinder every time he
I don't think we're grinding.
He wants to get another hour, it doesn't seem fair.
I, I'm not an employee.
I know that's going to happen the next time you want.
I, well, I've been waiting for my check, but I haven't seen it.
All right, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, no.
Four to one passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for working with us.
Mr. Kittredge, come on up.
Uh, the first one is, consider a sore usage abatement from Kevin Neary of A- Anderbrook Drive.
So moved.
He said that, uh, he went to Florida and his, uh, faucet?
It was leaking, right, no one noticed it, and what I did is I went back over his records, and that's what we do to all of them, you know, if it stood out, it did stand out, it was that one time, and that's all we really have to go by.
So, the abatement is
Three hundred and
No, the amount paid is three thirty-eight. Amount paid, so what's the, what's the abating amount?
That minus the, was thirty-five was going to have to be paid?
I don't have that in front of me right now.
It was, uh
It should be on the form.
Three hundred and change.
It was, uh
That's three thirty, three fifty-eight sixteen.
Three fifty-eight sixteen minus thirty
Minus the thirty-five.
Thirty-five, uh, so it was like, we're going to bait probably three hundred and eighteen dollars, something like that?
So, his bill is usually thirty-five dollars a month?
That's the minimum, that was the minimum.
I have no problem doing it, I'm just trying to figure out what we're his bill's usually thirty-five, and it, that, that month it was three fifty-eight?
It says, uh, I reviewed the, uh, approval, and it's three hundred and twenty-three dollars, sixteen cents, he's looking for an abatement for the charging only thirty-five dollars for minimum quarterly sore usage charge, from three fifteen to six fifteen fifteen.
Guy's in Florida and his faucet was leaking, so we're going to go to the sewer, it's the bottom line.
But my question is, is that normally, the thirty-five dollars, is that nor, what his normal bill is?
During those months, while we went back, yeah.
Because that would be a quarter.
Right.
So, it doesn't matter whether, if he usually would use a hundred gallons if he wasn't here.
Right.
Wasn't here, so
Okay.
All right, any other, uh, discussion on that? We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. All right, uh, what else we have, consider approving the hiring of Lawrence Slate and Donald McKenzie, his snowplow driver is effective November first, two thousand fifteen, at seventeen twenty per hour and eighteen forty-six per hour C D L rate pending a sus- What?
No, no.
Uh, successful pre-employment physical
It's just standard, these people have been here before for us, these are all people I've used before, and they're starting to roll in now, you know, we put the ad out, and these people came for us, we're starting to get the other contractors in now.
So moved?
I just have a quick question, Mike, um, how many do we normally try and keep, I, I recognize his name, so I know
Yep, um
Do you have an idea?
We really don't have a, a definite number, um
So, do you rotate?
I'd like to have at least four guys to drive our trucks, and, and the more of the private guys are better, because we have sometimes issues with them, you know, breakdowns and all the other stuff, and we only use them when we can't handle everything, so
So, these guys would be driving our trucks?
Yes, these people drive our trucks, I haven't brought forward any of the people driving their own trucks yet, but these are the guys that drive the extra, because we have all the extra trucks there.
Right, okay, thank you.
These are the only two so far that you're doing?
Two far, yeah, so far, yeah, I believe there's another two minimum coming, I know that.
These guys are contract, contract employees, not regular?
These are seasonal, casual snow help, that's I think how you list them.
Hourly.
They just, yeah, they are, they just drive our stuff, they hop in our truck and off they go.
All right, I need a second.
I could be real
You second.
Well, if they work more than nineteen hours, we have to pay them health insurance?
No, because they're seasonal employees.
Right, seasonal employees are exempt from that, and
Right.
There was a second, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, comments on drought payment management study?
We might want to hold that. Yeah, why don't we? Given what we heard, we'll be here tonight.
Why don't we hold that till, uh, the next meeting, and so everybody can have a chance to, to look at it, and, uh, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Does anybody know what we paid for that, was it twenty-five thousand?
Seventeen thousand, wasn't it?
It was sixteen or nineteen thousand, I, I, I think it was sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, this one, okay, yeah.
Okay, uh, citizen voting to approve its signed proposal for T P I landfill inspection services during two thousand fifteen.
So
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mike, uh, you did a nice report and it was very good.
Oh, thanks, um, do you have any questions on it, you want me to go through it, or how do you want to do it?
Um, just, I wish everybody would do something like this.
See, and I just got it tonight.
Yeah, I, yeah.
And I understand, but I would like to review it.
You could, everybody could do it, but we never asked them.
No, I know.
That's why they don't, it's not done.
Well, we do get the reports from Yeah, you get We get monthly reports from all the, all the departments.
Oh, I know, but I mean
This is very concise in what it, what was done and everything like that.
Yeah, I think others that we get are very good, but this is good, thank you.
I got a couple of things that is aboard, a couple of the packets I put in the end were, um, bid services, um, as far as goods and services. I attached at the end for you to look at, because the next meeting, I'm going to ask you to vote on the top one that we already bid out, we've already had contractors come in and give assessments, this is trying to get things in place for the Malden Street project as far as, um, and all the other things we got going, the sand and everything. Um, I had to use one of the older contracts, I couldn't find anything after about two thousand thirteen that we bid out services, I thought I was going to be able to reach in a drawer and see who got awarded the bids, but I wasn't able to find anything, so, we put together a couple of them, um, and like I said, the one's already been done, we've already, uh, read the bids, and it's going to be up to you, you know, and now that you have this, you have this to your next meeting to look it over and see all the stuff we bid out. But we also have a second bid that I'd like to institute, um, it's for our manhole repairs, and it'll be catch basin repairs and all the other stuff. I got about forty of them on the list right now, they're in the centers of the roads for the sewer, they need to be repaired. Um, a couple of them were supposed to go out last year, I don't know what happened, but they never got to go out last year, so, uh, we worked up a, um, invitation to bid, and we, you know, put a few things into it, but I'm going to have Lenard Engineering, see, we have their services to oversee some of our bids, I'm going to have them look it over quick before we put it out, so some of the dates in this are going to be pushed back a couple of weeks as far as the manholes go, uh, but I like to keep this, once we get this set up, this is something we can do every year, we're just going to change the dates, and then you can, whoever's doing it can just plug in the numbers, we can get this stuff out, because we really can't keep up with all the stuff that's happening. You know, we can do a few catch basins here and there, and do a few repairs here and there, but some of these other things have to be, you know, sent out of house, so that's why I put this together. So that's why I put this together.
Mike, the, uh, like the manholes, like I saw one across the street that was painted green, is that something you're gonna...
Those were all the ones in the box, so that the bidders can come take a look at them. We put a list on the back of them, they're gonna come, we'll put it in the paper, put it in the central register, and they'll come take a look at them, give us a bid on them.
Is that listed in this package?
It's in the very, I think it's the last page, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And how many products, Mr. Lewis?
I think there's like forty of them that we've got that need to be done.
What has to be done?
They've gotta be raised and brought up. A lot of the frames are broken, and especially with sewer, that's why I hit the sewer first, is when we have broken frames, we have infiltration of water. So we're actually paying for sewage we're not even using, these things are leaking and, you know, they're noisy, some people have noise. Some of them are noise complaints, you know, trucks are hitting them, it makes my house sound like it's, you know, there's a bomb going off, because it goes right up their sewer pipe and stuff like that. But a lot of them, my biggest thing is we have a lot of infiltration in this town we really gotta deal with, so these are, this is a good start to get it going. And then once we have this in place, then, you know, every year you might only have a couple. We're, I don't think we've ever done this before as far as I know, so that we're kinda behind the eight ball on this a little bit.
Mike, when they fix those, do they build them back up with bricks, or they do, they have something more permanent or easy to use?
Um, I hate to say it, but sewer bricks are usually what they do. They have some, uh, material they put in, um, in certain places, but that moves. But unfortunately, where we have our pavement that freezes, the stuff that moves, it ends up cracking around it anyways, you know what I mean? So, I hate to say it, the mortar and brick is really what they do, they're gonna be bringing it up with that. But bringing it up to the surface so that it doesn't have the impact from a, a vehicle hitting it all the time helps a lot too. You know, and having the bolt-down covers and all the other stuff to keep things quiet helps us a lot. Again, it's, the biggest thing is trying to keep the water out of our sewers, you know, for this stuff, and making it good for the people too, so they don't have to hear this in their house. So those are just a couple of things, um, and a couple other things I just wanted to update you on, seeing, you know, I didn't give a chance to give this to you earlier, was, um, I have met with Lenard Engineering on a bunch of different occasions, we've walked Malden Street already. I got a call from him this week, and he was saying we have, after the test borings came in, um, the recommendation for them that hasn't come in yet is gonna be to grind part of the, from the Goodell Street section to the Crescent Street section, because it's, again, one of those surface treated roads they talk about. They come up with it's a sandy with some stone in it, it's not a gravel base, it's not a dense grade or anything like that, it's an old oiled road. And the same thing with Crescent Street, they're just old oiled roads, and if you just overlay them, and that's why I'm kinda glad they brought it up in the, their little presentation, but if we oil it, I mean, if we overlay it, it's no good. So they're gonna have to grind it up and they're gonna compact it down again, but by mixing the oiled, uh, material in with the sand and the stone that's already there, they're gonna make a good base for us, it's gonna be a uniform base, so it'll go up and down evenly during the seasons. There's gonna be some extra material left over, because whenever they do that, they, the road goes up a little bit, so we're gonna have to pay to get rid of a little, rid of a little of the material. Hopefully, not a lot, hopefully we can get rid of some of it on the edge of the road, stuff like that, but, um, and we addressed a few issues. We have a couple of drainage structures we're gonna have to deal with, we're gonna have to bring up the heights on a couple of things. It's not a lot of stuff I got the guys starting on, um, I think it was the fourteenth or whatever it is, we're gonna start doing some of them our guys in-house, which is so we're all done by the time they get ready to go through the project, we can get everything straightened out, so, um, just to let you know, everything's on track to trying to get that done this year, so...
Mike, what are the project limits? Are you saying, uh, the project, uh, uh, this season would go from, um, uh, from Goodell to Crescent and Pine Arden to Crescent? Or consideration this season of going further?
Yeah, it's that loop. They, they would love to do the whole thing, but the worst parts of the road are those two sections there from, um, Goodell, you know, the loop to Crescent, where most of the people take when they drop off the cars. They really believe that we can overlay parts of the other parts of the road. On Malden Street, we can do a simple overlay, and if, you know, time constraints and everything works right, they're hoping they can do the whole thing. But they've addressed, um, that lower part, and the part over to Pine Arden is the worst, is the worst of all, so... And that's where I'm starting my drainage, so we're starting with just a couple drainages, there's only a couple little things there, we got a couple days work, that's about there. We got a couple up at the top of Malden Street, we got a pipe to repair at the bottom by the, um, where they come together, but other than that, it's, you know, it's gonna all be on them, so...
Could I just, I'm sorry, the, the money for the, the grant money we got for the sidewalks by the school?
Yeah, the Mass Works grant.
Yeah, where does, do we know where that stands? Is it, there's no chance of us losing that because we haven't?
We already, we already started that project, I've actually walked it with them, we've actually been out on it.
Okay, so...
They're, they're engineering it right now, I should have that engineering. I didn't really bring that up, because, um, I know how important the, the Malden Street issue's been to everybody, but no, that's all started. Nancy saved the grant when she, right at the end of that time, and we got everything started, so we got all our paperwork in, we're, it's, it's gonna be a go, everything looks good. We've made a couple changes when we did the walk-through, through the center of town, we made a couple changes here and there, what we're doing, but other than that, it was...
It'll probably start next...
Spring, yeah, yeah, if everything goes right.
And then, I haven't been there for a few days, but Worcester Street, that, our barriers there?
Yeah, I haven't got, yeah, I haven't got a, a plan back from them on that, but they are working on that too, that's one of the projects.
Can we clean them up again and maybe paint it orange again, so people can see it at night?
Get a fourth coat on them, yeah.
I know.
Yeah, no, I, no, I understand.
Someone gets hurt.
Yeah, absolutely, we can do that, absolutely, yep.
And cut back some of the brush?
Yeah, you'd have to cut it before you paint, yeah, because it's all grown over the, over the barriers.
Right, over the side.
Yeah, I was actually hoping we could get a, uh, a mason to go look at just kinda fixing that wall for us and stuff, but it's so poison ivy, he wouldn't even go down there for us. I was asking Steve McCarron to take a quick look at it, to see if he could actually go in there and put the thing just load with poison ivy, so...
Maybe just, like you say, clean it up and then spray paint it again, or paint it the orange.
Yeah, we'll roll it again, we'll roll it again.
Are we, uh, doing anything with the pine croft, uh, area this year?
Um, it's funny you mention that. Verizon finally, I finally got through to Verizon. The only thing that's holding up that corner with Verizon's, the only people that haven't removed their, uh, wires from that pole, everybody else is done. I got an insurance, uh, assurance from Verizon today that they promised me if they're not out tomorrow, they'd be able the next day to move their stuff out, so that we can pull the pole, we can throw a quick little, I, I guess the, the wish of the board was, was to throw a little bit of asphalt there, throw in some temporary blocks. I mean, I don't think that's gonna be a big deal. You know, we've been waiting on them so we can move the damn pole, though, that's a problem. The pole's been there and they're the only ones that haven't done. Everybody else has been very good about moving all the cable and, you know, light department did their thing, so... So once that's moved, I mean, I have no problem if that's the wish of the board to throw a little asphalt on that corner and give it a test run, because that's what I thought the wish of the board was.
Put some barriers up above or...
Right, throw the, throw the temporary barriers up there and, yeah, I mean...
Maybe some big signs that say...
I think it would be...
Road, I mean, traffic flow change.
Right.
It would be nice if we notified Holden before we do that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, maybe put our sign up there, whatever we have to do for a while, yeah, give them a heads up.
Jersey barrier doing fifty.
Yeah, it's plastic, that's a good thing, yeah, yeah.
After the first one hits it, everybody will know.
Well, they might put it on their town sign, Mike, you know, and I just think that would be a nicer way to do it, like...
Right, especially when they have their new road now, it'll be all done, they'll be flying there with their coffee in their hand, not paying attention.
Right.
Uh, on your list of things, you put, uh, repaired the wall at the basketball courts and mortared hydraulic cement to the drain, is that where it was separating on the corner?
Yeah.
What, what was the repair to that? Because I was, I had talked to the previous director about that many times, I never got an answer, what, what happened, what was it?
Well, after I read all the emails and all the engineering they wanted to do and talked to the VersaBlock people and everything else, it was a bunch of suggestions. Some of the suggestions were take the wall down, some of the suggestions were let it fall, some of it having engineered, I mean, there was all kinds of stuff. So we went up there and looked at it with my foreman, and, um, we made a couple of tools to pull the uncompressible solids that held the blocks apart. All the stones had fallen in behind the blocks is what happened, um, and the, because the drain was leaking and pushing the stuff out. Um, so basically, we, uh, re-cemented it, pushed it all back together. I mean, I, I like to say we used some fancy thing, but we basically took a sludge hammer with a six-by-six block, and we just started tapping the, the wall in evenly all the way up. You know, we glued it for us, the adhesive they used, put it all back together, dug back a little bit on the top where the drain was, you know, re-cemented that, then we re-sealed the asphalt to the edge and everything looks good.
So that, the, it was infiltration from behind the wall, because the drain wasn't working properly is what caused it.
Right.
And now when I go look, it'll be flush and it won't be...
Oh, yeah, truly, there's only one block that we couldn't get back perfect, it's about a half inch out, because it wouldn't break from the adhesive they already put there, so that was the only, but everything else is, it came back, and it cost you about fifty bucks.
Do we, do we have any recourse? Obviously, this wall was built.
It's beyond the time that I was told, it was beyond our...
Maybe we should look into that, because, because no one ever took, everybody we've talked to about for the last year about this, everybody just said, no, it wasn't this guy, it wasn't that guy, it wasn't that company, but it had to be somebody that built the wall, because I think this is a fix for now, and I think we're gonna keep having issues with it.
I don't know, I think if you keep the water out of it, I don't think you're gonna have a problem. I think the water freezing is what your problem was. Um, it's cemented again, it's hydraulic cemented, um, I mean, I'm not saying it might not happen again, but I think it's, um, very slim as long as we keep it sealed. I mean, it's a big wall, it's, I mean, I don't know, I guess time will tell will be the big thing, but, I mean, we put them back into where they were, and we put probably more adhesive than they, they would've put when they put the wall up, because we, we had the chance to...
But the issue wasn't the, from my understanding from what you're saying, the issue wasn't the construction of the wall, it was the failure of the drain that, that was there that undermined the, the subsurface behind the wall.
It would be, that would be my guess, is that every time that it rained in the wintertime and froze, it pushed it out a little more, a little more.
That would be the construction of the wall, they should've, that shouldn't have happened.
What's gonna prevent that freezing from happening again?
Because we sealed the drain up. We sealed the, the seams between the drain and we, uh, hydrologically cemented the drain. The end of the drain was cracked, so with the part that came in, it cracked, whether it was from ice building up in it or whatever it was, it cracked somehow. I wasn't on board when they did the beginning part of this stuff, I mean, as far as to see what it was, because we kinda kept, uh, because we thought it was gonna be engineered, we thought it was gonna be this, so after I got all these emails, I basically went down there, we looked at it and checked it out, and I think if we keep the water out, I think it's like anything else, keep the water out of the road, it's not gonna heave, so as long as we can keep those seams sealed and we keep checking on it on a regular basis, maintain it, I think you, you should be, unless it's coming from somewhere else that I don't know about the water. I mean, if it's coming from a crack on the other side of the thing and ending up over there, we might still have the problem. But, I mean, that last rainstorm, I didn't see any water coming out, we went up there to check it out, I didn't see water coming out the side of the wall. We still have some coming out the other end of the wall a little bit, but that hasn't heaved yet, so... And the other thing too is, um, because you guys, whoever designed this, they, uh, ordered, um, midnight mocha, was a special order color for the blocks, and I ended up ordering a dozen blocks and a dozen tops, so we can put them outside to let them fade, so that if we have to replace some of these things, we can replace them in the future, but instead of having that brand-new-looking block that takes ten years to fade, we ordered a couple of things ahead of time. And I, I did, I talked to the manufacturer, and I talked to actually the, um, what was it, Green Acres or whatever, the people who built it and stuff like that, so... We gathered some intel and kinda repaired it, so like I said, knock on wood, hopefully it's fixed.
Mike, the solar signs, we had some problems.
Yeah. I had some...
I haven't gone to check, um, do you think they're gonna be a continuing problem?
I hope not, um, my only concern was, is that, um, when we did get ahold of the manufacturer, they kinda pointed us in a direction right away, and whenever, you know, manufacturers do that, it kinda seems like it might be a problem. The only good thing is, is they sent us the eyes, no charge to us, and, um, I had my guys walk through the process of replacing them, so we're able to replace them, and they sent us an extra one, no charge, just in case we have it in the future, so I guess time will tell, and...
Are they still under the, um, warranty?
The, the eyes themselves, they said we could've sent the whole thing back and they would've fixed it for us and sent it back, but we would've lost a lot of time, and, and I think once it was out of warranty, we're gonna end up fixing them anyway. I, I think it was like a year you get on them, so I mean, that's gonna be here before we know it. So we figured, when we talked to the people out there, we talked to people that are gonna be repairing them, they said it's an easy fix, we can walk you guys through it, we'll send you all the stuff you need, and that way there in the future, you guys can replace them all you want. It sounds like they're not gonna be charging us for a while, because it sounds like they know, even though they'll probably never admit it, that they know that it's a, a problem for them, is the photocell. So that's basically what we did, is replace the photocells.
So we have extra...
I have an extra one right now, I have one extra right now, and they, we're gonna send back the other one to them, because they're kinda researching a little bit, so...
And we'll get another one?
As we, yeah, as I use that up, and I hope they do, I hope they'll continue that way, I mean, I can't tell what they're gonna do in the future, but...
One other quick thing, um, and I just didn't go on the site to do it. Um, I was walking from the high school to the elementary school, you know, right, um, out on, on the road, on the sidewalk, and there was a good-sized branch stuck up in one of the trees, and this was last week, and it was dangling.
A whereabouts now?
Right, if you're coming outside of the high school,
Okay.
right along the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just didn't go into the system, um, to report it,
but it was just kinda dangling, and it was a good-sized one, up near the scoreboard end. So I have the guys walk down that part of the sidewalk. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Any other question? Thank you, Mike, really appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, uh, Intern Town Manager's report.
I'll pass on that, Mr. Chairman, I'm, uh, at tonight, been working on the budget and other things like that, uh, at the town meeting, little else to, uh, little else to report.
Alright, uh, meetings, invitations, and announcements.[1623.15]